Let's return to order. Welcome.
Welcome.
Welcome. We're so glad to have you. We're going to start with the oath. So we're going to ask you to stand and take the oath. Traditionally, if you'd like to have your family members come up and be with you, you certainly can. Or not.
Or you could go to them. Either way. You should have a written copy.
You should have a copy of your oath in front of you. And you can just read from there.
And Sherrell.
Oh, yeah, Sherrell.
Yep, you have to swear in as well.
Swear in as well.
Oh, the copy is in front of you. Sherrell, there's a copy in front of you.
There should be a copy of the oath in front of you. There you go.
So we'll begin. I, Terry Pavasich, solemnly swear that I will faithfully, with the authority of the office of the member of the board of education of the community high school district 99, in accordance with the laws of the state of Illinois, to express my ability, I further swear that I shall respect the privacy of the state of Illinois, protect the schools' district assets, I further swear that I shall respect tax pay obtained by serving as a faithful board member, and offer to seek a hearing for the board while respecting the privacy of the state of Illinois, I shall recognize that the board number is no longer as a number of decisions being made by majority vote by the board meeting, I shall abide by majority decision of the board on the terms of direct changes in such discipline as ethical and professional matters. Part of the board of education, I shall accept responsibility in my role in the commitment of quality education of every student in the district, in the district. I shall foster support of extensive participation in the community for how they call to find out how to set the course for the degree of community district 99. I shall assist in establishing and structuring an environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain exceptional potential through a certain organizational form. I shall strive to ensure continuous assessment of student treatment in all conditions affecting the education of our children, complying with state law. I shall serve as the education's key advocate in behalf of students and community schools, or schools, to advance the vision for District 99, and I shall strive to work together with the district superintendent to lead school districts, fulfilling the vision the board has created, fostering excellence in areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development. I shall strive to ensure that students, government, and all the conditions of education of our children, comply with the state law. I shall serve as educational key advocate on behalf of students in our community schools and advanced schools, and I shall strive to work together with this district to lead the school district towards fulfilling the vision of the board has created, fostering excellence in every student in the areas of academic skills, knowledge, citizenship, and personal development. Welcome to the board. Phew.
Welcome to the longest oath of office ever.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Can we just say, so moved?
You'll have plenty of opportunity.
Huh?
Okay, the first order of business is the election of permanent officers.
Excuse me, can I do roll call, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Roll call.
Thank you. Mike Davenport.
Here.
Christopher Espinoza.
Here.
Sherrell Fuller.
Here.
Jenny Hagstrom.
Here.
Nancy Kupka.
Here.
Terry Pavasich.
Here.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler.
Here.
Zoe Boyd.
Here.
And Sam Bull.
Here.
Thank you.
Now we'll move on to the election of officers. We have three positions: president, vice president, and secretary. Do we hear any nominations for the president?
I would like to nominate Nancy Kupka for president of our board.
Thank you, Terry.
Second.
I know that this doesn't require seconds or thirds, but I want to offer my endorsement as well, Nancy. Thank you for your service these last couple of years, and I'm so thankful you're willing to do it again.
I've read and remembered that it didn't require a second, but I wanted to second.
Thank you, Sherrell.
You're welcome.
Is there anybody else who'd like to offer up somebody for running for the board? Hearing none, I guess you're stuck with me for another two years. Thank you, I'm honored. Vice president?
I think we do actually, we have to take a roll call vote.
I'm sorry.
For vote for Nancy Kupka for president, Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Christopher Espinoza.
Aye.
Sherrell Fuller.
Aye.
Jenny Hagstrom.
Aye.
Nancy Kupka.
Aye.
Terry Pavasich.
Aye.
And Joanna Vazquez-Drexler.
Aye.
Thank you all, I'm quite honored, actually. Thank you. Do we hear any nominations for the vice president?
I would, in turn, like to nominate Mike Davenport to take the office of vice president.
Second.
Do we have any other nominations for vice president? Hearing none?
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Christopher Espinoza.
Aye.
Sherrell Fuller.
Aye.
Jenny Hagstrom.
Aye.
Nancy Kupka.
Aye.
Terry Pavasich.
Aye.
And Joanna Vazquez-Drexler.
Aye.
Congratulations, Mike.
Thank you.
And lastly, for secretary?
I hate to hog this, but I would like to nominate Julie Nidek as secretary of our board. She has done such an outstanding job of that, and to corral all of us is like corralling cats sometimes. So, thank you, Julie, and I hope you accept the nomination.
Thank you.
No one could come behind.
And I think you were being kind when you called us all cats to corral.
Probably.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Christopher Espinoza.
Aye.
Sherrell Fuller.
Aye.
Jenny Hagstrom.
Aye.
Nancy Kupka.
Aye.
Terry Pavasich.
Aye.
And Joanna Vazquez-Drexler.
Aye.
Congratulations, Julie.
Thank you.
Thank you to all the nominees, and congratulations.
Okay. We move on to the first reception of visitors for this particular meeting. We have two opportunities for comments from the audience. The first reception of visitors is intended for audience members to address the board about any agenda item in which the board will vote. Does anybody wish to address the board? Hearing none, we'll move on to the approval of... Oh, I'm sorry, I keep forgetting. Is there anybody?
Nothing online either.
There was nobody online the first meeting as well?
Correct.
For the record. Okay. The first bit of business, then, is the approval of the meeting dates.
Please follow our traditional Monday, Wednesday, and only adjust due to holidays. So it's... Or, not Monday, Wednesday. First and third.
Third Monday. I was thinking about...
Wow, yeah. So first and third Monday of the month, unless there's a holiday or a federal holiday, and then it moves.
Or we also will, if we don't have any business to conclude, we'll postpone a meeting or delete a meeting. So we need a motion for the board of education to approve the board of education meeting calendar for 2021, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Joanna and Mike.
I'm sorry, pardon the word.
Joanna and Mike.
Thank you very much. Joanna Vazquez-Drexler.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Christopher Espinoza.
Aye.
Sherrell Fuller.
Aye.
Jenny Hagstrom.
Aye.
Terry Pavasich.
Aye.
And Nancy Kupka.
Aye. The meeting dates are approved. Next is the appointment of board committees and liaisons. So traditionally, what we've done is asked the members of the board to take a look at the different committee appointments and let me know by end of day Friday what you're interested in. We'll do our best to try to have people get the committee of their choice. Even if you want to stay on the committee you're on existing, please let me know by Friday, and we'll go from there. So we'll announce it prior to the next meeting who's going to be on what committee or as a liaison.
And Chris and Jenny, if you have any questions about what any of those entail, Nancy and I can answer those questions for you.
There's a short blurb in the minutes, in the notes, about what you're doing. Okay, moving on then to the board workshop, the 2020-2021 school year update.
Okay, so we continue to move forward with the in-person model, as you heard from Zoe and Sam tonight. Extracurriculars and athletics are up and going, and we're having a lot of success in both of those areas. Struggles continue with that illogical contact tracing that's out there. We have raised our concerns that have been brought up by our own staff, community members, parents, board members. We... I have advocated at all levels, Dupage County Health Department, Illinois Department of Public Health, and the CDC for the guidelines for contact tracing to more closely match the guidance for what's considered safe for in-person instruction. However, we do not appear to be getting any movement on that. We were informed today in our meeting with the Dupage County Health Department, who's getting tired of hearing me talk about this topic, that there may be some updates in the next few weeks about duration of quarantine, because there are seven or 10-day options right now. Illinois is requiring the 14-day option and not providing any of those other flexibilities. By the time these get updated for this school year, it's practically and essentially over. But we are continuing to advocate for changes. You know, hopefully, they'd make them immediately, but I imagine those, any changes won't be in place until next fall. We've started a coordinated letter-writing campaign amongst superintendents to send to Illinois State Board of Education, Illinois Department of Public Health. So far, all of our collective efforts have been unsuccessful. So it continues to disappoint us that it's very... You know, all year, we've had a lot of things that have come in from health experts that we have not always agreed with, but have deferred to the health experts and have tried to point to where it is that they have provided a logical rationale for those decisions. This is one where it's been very difficult for us as school leaders, because they're... First of all, the rules that they are asking us to comply with, they have not put on any public-facing website. They have only communicated these with us via email. So there isn't anywhere where we can point families or students or the public to as to what the guidance is. And the second thing is, is it's very hard to defend when we're not given any logic as to why these decisions are being made. We're just being told that this is what we are to comply with. And this is not an area where we have any flexibility as a school. When it comes to quarantine rules and those kinds of things, it isn't something we pick from. This is clearly under the guise of Illinois Department of Public Health and thus the Dupage County Health Department. Dupage County Health Department is clearly following the guidance of Illinois Department of Public Health. So that's where this is originating from. That's where we have tried to get a voice with. I know several of my colleagues were speaking today with Illinois State Board of Education. You heard from our students today. This is disappointing for them, and it's, you know, making many of our students choose to just stay home and learn remotely at a time when they should be back at school, because that's what, you know, CDC and IDPH has said is safe to do in the system we have set up. So it's disappointing in the end, the end of the year, at a time where we have worked so closely with them to try to work cooperatively, to share what the rationale and the reasons are for the very difficult decisions we've made. This is disappointing to end on this note, so... In other news, though, we continue to plan for a more traditional return in the fall. We had hoped to get guidance from Illinois by the end of April as to what those decisions would be for the fall. As the board knows, I served on that committee to help Illinois State Board of Education make recommendations for the fall. I have not yet seen any of the outcomes of that, other than the philosophy-type document that was shared with the board last week. So hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, we get some guidance. Right now, really, it's many hours of meetings each week with superintendents across the state, what-if-ing, what could happen, but really, no definitive answers. So we're spinning our wheels a lot right now in superintendent circles, waiting for definitive guidance to be released. We hope that's sooner than later, now that we're at this point in the pandemic and have a lot more evidence to work on than we did at this time last year. So that's kind of where we're at right now. Questions? No, Zoe?
To your last point, I'm sure you guys are still working it out a bunch now, but I know a lot of students...
Zoe, could you get a little closer?
Hello?
Yeah.
Okay, that's a lot better. I think students are interested in knowing if any elements of this year's block schedule will carry over into next year. Do we know anything about that yet?
Our plan for next year is to follow the pre-pandemic schedule, the traditional District 99 schedule, and then evaluate... We had always planned on evaluating block schedules for the future. It was something that we were working on before the pandemic arrived, but we really think it's important to reestablish normal next year and just get everybody back and comfortable and not make too many changes from what we've had in the past. And then, we have a lot to learn from, from this year. That survey is out to find out what people thought about this school year, and then, over the next school year, we'll do the work to determine, are there any aspects of it we should capture long-term?
Got it, thanks.
Yep, great question, though. Any other questions? All right. Gina?
Thank you. Good evening. Tonight, I'll talk about the consolidated district plan. This is just the introduction. You may recall, we have submitted a consolidated district plan for the past three years. The plan basically consists of... It covers several of our grants, many of which you are familiar with, so Title I, Title II, our Title III, which are English learner grants, Title IV, and our IDEA, which is our special education. The plan is composed of a series of pages, and the way in which it covers those grants is by asking questions. And while the questions do not necessarily focus on the ESER grant, which is the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, we are expected to embed in our answers how we plan to use those funds, what kind of programs we plan to support, what kinds of resources we plan to use those funds for. So it embeds ESER in a way, while temporary, allows us to look at different funding sources and how we plan to use those sources. The timeline really began more than a month ago, when I began writing the plan. There are certain elements of the plan that carry over year to year. Also began conducting local needs assessment and doing it this year in several different venues, from meeting with department chairs to see their perspective on what our needs are and looking at different data sets, to actually conducting a larger meeting, which was just last week, that included parents, teachers, administrators, and administration and support staff. We had about 15 people conduct that local needs assessment, and I am still gathering data from that assessment. This month, and be reviewing that, of course, certainly presenting now where we're at in terms of the plan to the board, sharing different highlights and aspects of it with different individuals, and then continue, obviously, writing into June. The plan will come back to the board in June, when it's finalized, for a board vote, hopefully approval, and then we submit it to the state board of education. So in addition to looking at various data sets, and we looked at different data sets this year, in some cases than we did in previous years, and some that we look at every year. For example, we look at our ninth grade on-track numbers every year. That's very important for us, as we feel addressing those needs early is important. We also look at graduation rates, for example. This year, we looked at some grade data in light of the pandemic and various things. We also look at different parts and different groups, talk about different initiatives and different interventions that we already have in place. And many of these interventions, I've talked about before, but a couple that I will mention that the board supported, of course, making changes with summer school for this year in terms of funding it for students, certainly changing that and anticipating that we might see a slight increase as students can repeat courses, and we made some changes in terms of how that impacts student grades and GPA. And then, as you may recall, we brought on some additional resources for our English learners and for families that need language support. Couple of the newer ones, we did increase bilingual programming this year, and we plan to continue to do so for next year as well. We did hire an interventionist at both buildings that works directly with students and supporting them. We were planning to start the PATH program, and that sort of morphed due to COVID, and plan to implement that fully next year, and as the board knows, we implemented PAPER, which did come up in our local needs assessment several times, as teachers talked about how PAPER is being used by teachers, or by students, I should say, and how teachers are using that information. And then, we already, as the board knows, will be adding additional social work support for next year, additional advanced seminar class, and we also, just recently, will be adding some social study sections to reduce class size. So again, I will continue the writing and analyzing the data and bring that back next month.
Does the board have any questions?
Yeah, I have one. Gina, can you remind me, we have a contract with PAPER through, about when?
Through the end of next year.
Next year, okay.
And we will certain... I meet monthly, as do our instructional coordinators, with our representative from PAPER. We look at data, we look at all kinds of information, and we will continue to do that into next year and assess whether or not we wish to continue it for some...
Any other questions? No?
Thank you. Sorry.
All right. Master facility plan, over the last couple of weeks, the core team, members of the core team went on tours, involved in those. Mike went, former board member Don Renner went. We had many staff there, representatives from White. So it's really a nice snapshot in time to see where we're at, because we're heading into this final summer of work. I'll just give you a couple of pictures. Here we are, standing right down the hall from here. So this is the steam edition that we're in now, and then the alley over at North High, the auditorium, which, until you're in it, does no justice. Even people who work, you know, for White, our construction company, that hadn't been in that space yet, everybody walks into that and then just, like, freezes, because it's immense. You know, the volume of space there is literally breathtaking. And we went into one of the ceramics labs over here, just a few pictures. We were all over both buildings. Mark White, who is the CEO of White and Company, who is our design-build partner on the project, and he is a DGS alum, he came over to visit North High, so we hope to have him back at South High soon, but he returned to walk through and see the progress that was going on. And here's a view. Courtney Dement, who is the next principal at North High, was also on the tour with us. So there's a shot of us looking from the third floor down on the new commons at North High. This is a striking space. You know, people are going to be very impressed by what we... what we're opening up here. So Mike, was there anything else you wanted to add about the walkthroughs?
I would just say that it, you know, as an architect myself, I have a pretty good vision for what things are going to look like before they're, you know, while they're just on paper. So it takes a lot to exceed my expectations, but in both cases, I... You... When we all finally get a chance to see everything in person, you're going to be just floored. And more so, I think, you know, our community, I'm just... This is everything we envisioned and so much more. So many people are going to benefit from what's happened here. And the fact that it's all come off during this pandemic is just amazing.
Yes.
Just amazing. And, I mean, we... I always like to point to, you know, we talk as a board, what are our greatest accomplishments? And I talk about stability issues, where we have contracts, and, you know, they're not... There's no protesting going on. Things just move along smoothly, and so much work goes into that, so much work goes into that. And this, the fact that we're... We have, you know, not extra, but we're not using up all our contingency, right? I mean, it's on budget. We're getting the things done that we promised would be done, and we're finding things, you know, like, we talk about...
It's the stuff we also hoped to get done.
Exactly. We found opportunities when the patios at North, and it just... It's just, it's really something. And I think when, after this is all done, and the community finally gets to come in and see what's happened here, I think they're going to marvel at what happened, and it's almost going to feel like a rebirth, I think, of our district. So I can't say enough about the job Mark White and his entire crew have done there, and his parents were both graduates of the original Downers Grove High School. So for him, it's a multi-generational thing, and so this is just the right teen at the right time. We've talked about that, too, Hank and I, just that it took all the right people to be in the right place at the right time, and it's... Wait till you see. It's just absolutely amazing, just amazing.
That being said, board members that want to go for a walk, let me know, and we can set aside some time, especially our two new board members, so I can... That'd be a longer walk, because you'll have a lot to see. Our newer board members, or our established board members, need to just see what the recent updates were, but it's pretty impressive what's going on.
I can't tell you the number of community members that have come up and said, when are you going to have an open house? So, you know, I think that that is going to be a really key thing to get the community involved, is to have open houses, just to show, maybe pictures before, and then, this is what you've got now. And they'll be just so amazed at that, and I think that's going to be a huge step with the community.
These spaces are going to be in demand. There's going to be, I mean, opportunities for community-wide events to happen in these spaces, and they're going to want to happen in these spaces. The auditorium itself, I think, is going to be the premier auditorium in the western suburbs, anywhere, any... For anything. I mean, it's just amazing. And so the... You just start... As you walk through these spaces and you start imagining the things that can happen. We talk about, and the commons spaces with the stairs and the choirs being able to come down the stairs singing, or, you know, be above us and just fill the whole space, and the displays that can happen on the walls and in the showcases. It's really going to be something, so... It's such a privilege to be part of it, and it's taken a few school boards, right, to get this done? But...
The huge effort by the community. Yeah. To your point, a huge effort by the community.
This is just... I was very moved, especially stepping into the auditorium, and the commons spaces at both schools are something, and to see the gym at North being used, and, you know, it's... And especially with this, everything's happened with the pandemic, pandemic, to see the kids in there, you know, using the space, and the wrestling team having their space set up there at North and using that in such a good way, and the gymnastics area, we even got a little... We even got a little show when we were there, the young man doing some giants and such for us on the bars, and that space works, you know, all the concerns we had about whether or not there was enough room for the equipment, and... But it looks just like everything's coming together fantastically. Better stop talking, I could talk all night about this.
So we've heard. So the offer stands. Any board member, just reach out, and we can go for a little walk. Just give me some advance notice, so I can wear good walking shoes, because it's a lot of steps. All right. That's it for my report.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, we'll move on to the second, I guess, the third reception of visitors for tonight. This is an opportunity for audience members to address the board on any topic pertaining to community high school District 99. Does anybody wish to address the board?
Nothing online either.
Nothing online? Hearing none, we need a motion to adjourn. Would one of our new members like to make a motion?
Go ahead.
Sure, yeah.
So moved.
So moved. Would you like to second, Jenny?
I second.
Chris and Jenny?
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We're adjourned.